Excellent. And I'm bringing it over to Kelly.
And Council, we're back to you again. We've got some feedback presented. We did present it to the Services Committee. Today, just to provide some same feedback. Process that we've gone through following the process that the city has. Senior Advisory Committee back in March to ask for their support, renaming the center. See that which that we were keeping with committee report. Prior to us being my team. Fortunately, and I will take the blame for this, that it was supposed to have the four names that we had originally presented to Mayor, to Council, to the committee, I thought had been vetted through them and had concerns. So we met with the family to get the name of the name. Which one presented the council council. Some activities center been taken senior hour discussion. Senior being. Wanting to program it more progressively with not just the seniors, but as we go through our. Yes, each sl grant process with our consultant or council all seniors that don't necessarily have access or know about the senior center or maybe providing the right kind of programs there. So we want to make sure that we can get everyone to camp. So we still would like to move forward with to the. Senior Center meeting. We did that get some feedback that the senior advisory committees that were concerned that the senior was not in the name. You know, like so they'll take lane that I thought that those four names had been vetted through that prior. We called a special meeting last week, Friday. That was senior advisory committee. They were very passionate about seniors being left in the name. Obviously apologize for this communication on the side, but again, it's up to us to make sure that. Services had very big conversation with them. That the name be the Don Person Rent Senior Activity Center, which we do sign and everything. So it would just be amendment to the original committee report. And they, they, yeah. I told him I heard from the council, we did then after that meeting. That was them. Family was totally fine with that as well. So. Worth the flex the amendment to that. But we discussed at the Community Services Committee when at the special meeting. Senior Activity Center is very. A lot of the other senior activity centers that know that us, you know, try to leave some knowledge and programming things. So we do with grants or teacher. So we went. The senior or rent and they were. Rent Senior Activity Center with Don Person. So.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to. I have conversations with the mayor that would do as well separate. I mentioned, you know, with the, they are. Don't know was. That will actually say who the person was. So in 100 years, people will know why we named it after he. Something that we can source, let us see what further consideration if you guys want to take a little bit of that. Or we can.
Judith, can you hear me? Sorry. The audio is not coming through. James, can you try speaking?
Testing one two testing.
Testing. Yeah, I hear that better. Kelly.
Test me.
Can you hear it now?
I can, but it's still not, it's still not great. Sorry for this. We tested it earlier.
What about something now?
Oh, now I can hear you. I can hear you just fine.
Yeah.
No. No, it went away.
Well, that's where it was.
That's where it was?
No, it was on this side.
He was on that side.
Jason, can you hear?
I can hear you guys now. Yes. Oh, now I hear, I can hear Councilmember Perez too.
Yes.
Thank you.
So we were talking about the plate.
Okay.
Discussing if it's something that we take, want to take as counsel to that with the our part of this already done? Or we just keep it up and let Kelly's department do that. I would like you.
I, I think it's great idea to do that. I think one of the things when I look at some of the buildings that we. Our facilities were named in the past. It's like, why did we name it after, what did that person do that right? And some I know like Jean Cool is obvious. But that's to me, it may not be obvious to someone else. And so I think having something like this at the building that's really important in our city, having a class. So that people for years and years in memoriam, in memoriam can see why we're, why we have named that.
So maybe Kelly, something that we will coordinate with you.
That would be great. Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have a lot of obviously the, the background information, email or memos that we've sent out so we can work on what council would like to have.
Yeah, I will like to see their different ideas, but you know, we get there are beautiful plates that they have actually dip file.
Yes.
All those, you know.
Popped up in my.
Yeah. So I was thinking something like that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further on the renaming of the senior center? Well, I have a committee report for this to, which will, we'll have a resolution on it later. To officially rename it the Don Person Rent Senior Activity Center. So I will go ahead and sign this. No objections.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Our second item on the agenda is the transportation improvement program or tip update. And we have Martin and Jim Slant here.
Thank you, Council President. And I think I'm joined virtually by Heather Gregerson. She's our transportation project coordinator. So she'll be also in the background answering any questions when we get to that particular area. She's basically responsible for putting together the tips. But this is, that's right. But this is our annual update to the transportation improvement program for the years 2023 through 2028. It is a required state law that we update this on an annual basis. But most importantly, it's important because we reach out to stakeholders, either internal or external stakeholders to get input as we update the plan. And of course, get citizen and council input on it as well. And after we're, after the council does adopt it, we will be sharing it with our other jurisdictions that are adjacent to us, King County, TIB, one of our grant agencies. And Wash Dot as well to coordinate projects as well as outside utilities to coordinate budgets as well. Next slide. It is a process. It's a very lengthy process as Heather can explain to you. She basically gets started once we complete adoption of the tip. It really gets started with abating projects for the following year as well. Right now, we are right in the middle looking for council's input on the initial prioritization list that we put together. And I'll talk a little bit more about how we prioritize the projects. Then we'll have some further administrative review and have a public hearing in September as well. So there will be one more presentation very similar to this for the public as well to provide input. As far as what's new in the tip, I mentioned prioritization. We've have a new system as of last year. It's the first time we did the prioritization. We redid it this year. We're getting a little bit more experience in using the system. There's probably still some more tweaks we can do on it as well. We updated the funding status for the projects. We adjusted some of the project scopes and funding for those projects. We have at least one new candidate project and of course we removed any projects that are no longer programmed. Next slide is about that funding status and we did have color coded. So that projects that are basically reddish orange are projects that are fully funded. They may even be under contract like the Duval project is already under contract. Financial commitments have been made. Projects that are getting towards construction are more of a yellowish color and working down the line. It just kind of gives you an idea what the status of that project is. So just beginning, or is it something that's really close to construction or is it under construction right now? And the program funding is it lightish, light blue? We have several programs like the traffic safety program, which we basically fund every year. So there's usually a few projects like, for example, right now we're working on speed humps along Lake Washington Boulevard. That'll get funded out of the traffic safety program. We're also looking at a oxymoron pedestrian signal six and Duval. So that would get funded out of that particular program. We have another program called Safe Routes to Transit. We have several crossing projects that are by bus stops as part of that, including a hawk signal at Sunset and Oakdale. So some of those programs have multiple projects as you can read in the descriptions. Candidate projects are basically unprogrammed. These are projects we have on the list. Typically, they're at the bottom of the list. They don't have as high a priority typically because there's no funding associated with those particular projects there. But they're always projects we look at when we look at grants, for example. We look at the criteria for those grants and see if they match up with any of our project. So we get those projects funded as well. Some of those are also projects by other jurisdictions supporting as well. And also in the non-color category is just products led by others like the Wash Dot Direct Connector Project on eight landing area. It's a project that will be led by Wash Dot of course. Getting to the prioritization of the tip. As you see on the left, you'll see the criteria that we use. Safety, free cell, respiratory, look for hazardous locations. Would you like me to stop there? I was wondering why.
We got your screen.
Yeah, you have to escape out of.
Just like that.
And this presentation is available online as well.
Yes. In several parts.
Thank you. So then the second priority is planning implementation is the project consistent with our existing plans that we have. System integrity is all about, does the project help maintain our current system, make it more efficient? Financial is all about either grant commitments that we have, or maybe it'll project that will reduce some of our liabilities as well. Directives are just that. We either have a mandate to do this, such as bridge inspections. We're required by federal law to do bridge inspections or a bridge inspection program for that. Or is it just a luck official wanted to promote this project or a particular neighborhood? It's directed from that perspective. Finally, there's a mitigation mitigative criteria that talks about whether it's the addresses development impact such as Park Haven Extension would be a good example of that. Address some of the impacts of the sequel developments up in that particular area. And I will mention there are three of the criteria that awaited more than others. Safety, financial and directive have a higher racial weighting compared to the other three criteria. Yeah. To actually go to the list of example of how this shakes out. We're just showing here the actual projects that are funded and how they rank. So you can see up on top, Duval is one of those projects that were already signed a contract with financially that project already. Addresses a lot of safety concerns for bikes. We're filling in a lot of gaps of missing sidewalks with that project. We're doing some signal improvements for the school there as well. So score is very high on our criterion. As you can see, it goes up quite a bit. And one of the projects that are fully funded tend to, because of that higher weighting for financial, typically ends up being a little bit higher and a lot of them address safety as well. So that's why they're kind of bubble up to the top. Pause there for a second. I have any questions on this far.
What's this category mean? Is RC, MP, NM on the priority ranking? In the fourth column?
Heather, are you online? Heather will know that for some reason I'm just blanking on those. Oh, I hear it's non-motorized. Non, it stands for non-motorized roadway construction, I believe, is RC.
Got it.
It's empty maintenance.
Maintenance preservation. Yeah. Okay.
I think it's breaking cheap. I can see you there.
Yeah, Jim, you're, you're on the right track.
Yeah. OS is operation and safety.
No, I'm just reading the, from the other.
And one thing that I will do for the next presentation, we do it to the public, I think we'll do the same text slide like this, but with candidate projects. We'll see where the priorities for those are as well. That must be helpful. Next slide talks about.
So I know when you were talking about Duval, when you talked about sidewalks. And then when I look at 24 sidewalk rehabilitation replacement, is that like citywide?
That is a citywide program, but this for existing sidewalks, replacing them when they're failed, basically. We have one sidewalk project worked up on West Hill on Cedar Avenue, right? It's truly failed and we're reconstructing that sidewalk.
Thank you.
Yeah. This graph shows the geographic distribution of our projects by expenditure. A lot of large category is the city center. And the reason for that is that that is a regionally designated center according to PSRC. And a lot of the criteria for grants, for example, are really centers based. So those projects actually score really well. And the PSRC's criteria. So you see a lot of our grants are for those areas. That's why that category is the largest. That's the area where we have the most infrastructure as far as transit service and things like that as well, which mirror very well with the transportation 2050 plan. Then following that is the citywide at 28%. Going around the circle, it's the East Plateau Highlands. Kenny Dale Valley at 10%, Talbot at 2%, Vincent seven. And then finally, the CR Cedar River. So it shows our expenditures by year. The red is the grants. So that typically this is the way it looks every year is that we have a lot of grants front loaded in the first three years. And then we're going to be working on grants to fill in the gaps over the basically 24 through 28, working on those grants right now. But as you can see, over half of our expenditures for 2023 are actually grant funded. More than half of them are green bar on top is the undetermined. Those are needs that we have or still haven't fulfilled. Our funding gap for that locally, we do that for some bond, bond revenue for the North Park Extension and Highlands Landing Project. With eligible for their funding. We do use mitigation and back fees on a lot of projects like capacity added, like three year project. But we have been reliant on grants a lot over the years and will continue to do so.
As I was reading this, I saw that all the undetermined that I know that goes out. I'm curious if it's ever been established as to what percent of the undetermined ends up not actually coming to fruition. I mean, I determine, hey, we don't know. We'll, we'll find a genie's lamp and the money will come or something like that. But you know, is there some sort of formula?
Some of them we know better than others, or we have a plan where you've identified what our needs are. Like the barrier free path that the council adopted. In that particular plan, we identified in order to hit all of our high priority areas for barrier free, that's basically wheelchair ramps. We needed expenditure of about 320 per year, thousand per year to actually meet that need. That's another way to look at the undetermined is really it's, it's our, our needs that we've had as far as identifying what they are. And some plants identify it very well. Some areas we don't have them defined as well. Sidewalk is one area that we continue to work on to figure out. What are overall needs to be for sidewalks? Is that, that probably could be a lot bigger because some of our needs are probably not as identified as well as we would like them to be.
I figured that might be the case.
But our goal is that for most of our programs to have a plan in place that council approves, so we can identify what our true needs are. Let's try to meet those needs, but you can't always do it. Speaking of grants, we did receive some additional grants this year. We received a preservation grant from PSRC of 1.3 million for Long Oakdale from 34th to 16th. It's very close to that new development there on your site. We did receive funding for a design and right away from Sunset Trails, the portion of the Sunset Trail. If you recall, we had that whole corridor funded for design right away, but that to be so expensive, we're having to go back and phase it. So we're doing a little portion of that trail on the north side of Sunset from Edmonds up to Harrington. And then there'll be some private development that's occurring now that will fill in some of those gaps and move it further to east as well. But that was one of the highest priorities for that particular area was to get that trail installed since we're starting to have the phase it. That's what we wanted to get started on first, that section of the trail. We'll continue on trying to finish that project, but it'll be a multi-year, multi-phase project at this point. We also received quite a bit more funding for Rainier Avenue corridor improvements, which we'll be going out to bid for very shortly. We received the transportation improvement board grant of $5 million and received another grant for PSRC of over $4 million. So we've received over $20 million for that particular phase. It's about a $25 million project. So we've done very well to, to get that funded with outside funding. Last project that we got funding for was the North 44th Street I-405 Park and Ride. This is for a boardwalk design. Have a park and ride, which will be funded by Sound Transit. That's on city property, just to the, be the southeast quadrant of the interchange there. We need to get the people from that park and ride to the sidewalks that we built as part of the roundabout construction. And on building a boardwalk to make that connection. We did receive some state funding to get that started on the design. And hoping that potentially we'd be able to get Wash Dot to actually build that as part of their project. It's from there, within their footprint. So environmentally, we think we can make that happen, but we continue to work on that and get started on design of that next year. As far as. New projects, we've added the Northeast 44th I-405 Park and Ride. Just kind of give you a little bit of background about that project. It's part of Sound Transit three, that particular project along with an inline. Transit station there will be served by the Swift Service that, that will be implemented in 2026. Fortunately, through the realignment, they delayed the parking there for 2036, but we've been negotiating with also a council member, Prince, to get that done. When the service arrives in 2026, we've come up with a plan we think that is doable. And we've, we bring hopefully by the end of this year, an agreement with Sound Transit to reimburse us for the design. And right away for that particular eventually construction for that particular project. We, the city have agreed to take that on if they provide us reimbursement for that. So we'll work out the details in that, have an agreement to sometime by the end of the year with Sound Transit. Yeah, right now they do have current funding of about, I think it's like $10 million that was earmarked for PE and. Right away for the Cannibal aside. And of course, that's on our preferred option. It's on the other side. So they've agreed that at least the staff have agreed at this point, the concept that we could take it on as far as city designing it, purchasing the right away, using the city property that we have there. And moving forward with it to implement in 2026. Right. Yeah. Yeah. It will, it will most likely get us through design right away, but the big price tag of course will be construction. The other project that we have that's new is the Renton Maple Valley Highway and 140th Way Southeast Project. We have a lot of congestion at that particular intersection. We receive a lot of complaints. We've come up with a plan to address that. It is an unfunded project this, this point, but I think it'll be very competitive for future grants as well. But the other thing with that project is a lot of the congestion there, we feel is because of cut through traffic and because of congestion on 405. So we're kind of waiting to see what happens in 2024 when 405 is open with additional lanes and seeing if the actual congestion goes down at this particular intersection. So it's something we're going to keep an eye on as far as that, but we do want to get it on the tip at this point. As far as projects under construction, right now we have our street overlay. We're going to be doing the Bronson Bridge seismic retrofit project as well. Duval Avenue road ramp improvements. I'm sure you've seen it from driven upon this plateau. Rainier Avenue improvement space four will get started this year as well. We have ADA curb ramp project that's underway and the Highlands pedestrian improvements are underway at this time as well. Now finally to show you some pictures. Projects that we've completed. This is the pedestrian improvements we've done along Howser Way. This is funded through a complete streets grant. TIB provided bulb outs to shorten crossing distance for pedestrians. Have some different type of railroad crossings that are less ominous than the bridge ones that we had up there before. You may not have noticed, we actually raised those intersections up to the same level as the sidewalks, the corners. That provides for a totally barrier free surface for people to negotiate with handicaps or wheelchairs through that particular area. Of course, the Wells and Williams project, converting the streets back to two-way and writing a lot of pedestrian improvements and bike improvements at the intersections. It's completed this year. We also completed the cycle track. Airport way and the next phase of Rainier will pick up where this project left off and continue with a multi-use trail up to the north in city limits. Finally, we do have a safety projects we finished this year as well, Renton Elementary, Middle Schools. So those are all pedestrian crossings that we do. This is what they call rapid, raccoon, rapid fire beacon crossing where pedestrians push the button and it flashes very rightly. You've seen it to landing if you haven't seen it, some of the schools. And that I'll be happy to, along with Heather, be available to answer any questions.
All right. So first, thank you for the elementary middle school crossings. Where my daughter goes to school, where they went in and it's made a world of difference for the kids, especially in the morning. Trying to cross and thank you. Earlier when we were talking, you talked about congestion. I can't remember where you mentioned the congestion. Yes, um, years ago, I think it was probably four or five years ago at a retreat. You were talking about that section by Benson where you have the road and we did this really, we were getting really long backups. For what street it is. Benson, maybe it's Benson and Benson Road. I can't remember. I've noticed that the queue there for backups has got really, really long again. Like we fixed it and now for some reason it's really bad again. Like I won't even take that at certain times of the day because you sit there 10, 15 minutes.
That's going southbound probably on PM.
Yeah.
Do you know what your street is? It's right when you go from backside coming this way.
Yeah, I remember when we looked at that a few years.
Yeah, and we fixed it and it was great. And we even did, we put two turn lanes in there, but now it's just backed up.
Yeah, and we had some difficulties when we did the adaptive signal control on car road. That's what interfered a little bit with some of that congestion.
But I noticed, I noticed it the last couple of months. Like if I'm trying to get somewhere really quickly and don't go that way.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you. Mr. President, I thought of a question. So I will ask one other time and as you see, we live in a situation to come back to be to give more opportunity to.
Sounds good. Yeah, we'll keep it casual.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation and thank you very much for your hard work. As you may know, because I have mentioned it several times, transportation is very personal to me. I can say that I have spent half of my life in a car, the stop the traffic. And, and one of the things that motivated me really to run for office was the fact that I would not be in my car complaining about everything that is going wrong, but that I can actually express my, my concerns in a table and that my concern will be heard. And I'm very pleased to say that what I was reading through this document, I can see that my concern is here over the years and I, and I really appreciate it. Because every single time that I'm going to ask myself, okay, why am I doing this? I can go to this document and say, this is what I can. So thank you very much for all of that. And I would highlight really quick some of the things that I have seen in this document that are very that are for me an improvement because you may remember in my first year that I wrote this document that I couldn't understand anything. And then I have a former council member, Marsha Palmer, a dumb person who were out of shards in expertise of transportation, trying to explain to me and I still couldn't understand anything that was going on. So so there are a couple of things that, that I love that you did it, that you guys did during the past, in the past year. But this year is again here and I want to thank you. One of these is as we know, the transportation project is one of the most important documents that we have adopted as a council. Because the way it impacts the lives of every single resident or person that live or work in Renton. But in the past, what I used to do is to have the past one here and the current here to go back and forward to see what were the difference. I don't have to do that anymore because you guys did an excellent job to add a section that say change, changes from previous steps. And that, and that saved me a lot of time this time. And it obviously gets where the new grants, the funding, the projects, the programs added, the point is completed and the projects on the construction. And really, really, really making it very easy for me to see what we have done in the last year or this year, what is new, what is not new. The other thing that I appreciate is the fact that you added a section where you select the project number in a map because in the past has been also a question that whoever a constituents that read this, 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 this document cannot understand what is 20 to one compared to the priority or rank number three or four. So I, I think this is, this is great. The other thing that I, that I appreciate that I have seen the difference, I am a big fan of the color coordinated, color, the code of the funding. I mean, that make it very easy for me to find out what is funded, what is not funded, what programs are need funded. If I can add, and once, one suggestion is to add numbers on the pictures.
Yeah, I run the same problem.
Because yeah, I think every single time that I tried to go back and tell you why I'm pissed out and blah, and he was saying this. I cannot find, you know, that one. So first I wanted to take the time to, 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 to say again, thank you very much. This is a fair, a much more friendly document that the one that I received eight years ago by far. And I can appreciate that. So my first question will go to address the tip 2201, which is the street overlay. There is a joke that everybody says that city council members are in charge and take care of loopholes. And this joke is meant to diminish the role of this body. But I have never taken it personal because I think that infrastructure is one of the, the, the most important jobs that we have to, to, to help the quality, to improve the quality of life of the people that live around us. So I don't know if I have received the 2020 payment program state of the streets report. And if you have it in digital format, I would appreciate if I can see it. And therefore my question, how are we going to prioritize the projects based on this one? Because we have had this conversation before, there are some streets that need more repairing than other ones, but I always like to see projects all around the city, not just concentrated in one neighborhood. But see them because we don't have that much funds for this project. How can we cover the security?
Oh, we worked with maintenance very closely on that. Actually, we're working on this right now. We have some of the staff working on putting together a 10-year pavement preservation plan with our goal, performance measure of keeping our streets of at least what they call 70 pavement condition index on citywide average of that. We have a scale from zero to 100 and as long as you keep your pavements at 70 or above, you usually can extend the life of those pavements without getting into like costly repairs of reconstruction. We obviously have some streets that are already there and have a backlog, but our golden 10-year transportation pavement preservation plan will be to address those streets that are still in shape, good enough shape where we can preserve them and extend the life cycle of those. And we'll put together actually tenure transportation plan or project plan that'll show that we're addressing all the streets within the neighborhoods that we have with the articles, well, geographic criteria, making sure we address that. We'll also be looking at the pavement condition index of each one of those particular streets to make sure that we're actually putting strategies towards those streets, either through Mike Stenhouse's group up on the hill doing crack ceiling. Or maybe there's a, do some new treatments that we're going to be looking at as well. We haven't used before, so it's called the story seal. And capes seals, which are a little bit less expensive than a grind and overlay. So we're looking at different pavement strategies. And we've got a new program as well. I think we've showed it to you at least once that this is where we've come up with that average citywide baby convention index of 73 is where we're at right now. And we want to maintain that level or at least not get below 70 in the future. But hopefully by the end of this year, I'll be able to bring back to you how we prioritize those projects and show you that we're doing it all through the city. And we're going to put together what they call story map is also that on the web where anybody wants to go and see what their street condition is, they'll be able to flip on a map and see it. And we'll be able to see which projects will be in their area as well. That's our, that's our goal.
Yes.
Yes.
So I, I wrote my question on this on the 22, 26 South Seventh Street corridor improvements, the Oldstale Avenue Southwest, the Burnett Avenue South. But it really applies to any of the projects that talk about putting bike lanes in and that sort of thing. Now, I'm not as big an enthusiast of bike lanes as some of my colleagues on the however, I, I, I realize, you know, it's, it's, it's a necessity. People like them and that sort of thing is going that way. My question is, because I like the, I like the, the, the bike lane that was put basically on around the airport. And one of the reasons I like it is because it is clearly delineated, you know, and that sort of thing. Quite frankly, I don't think the ones are all that safe where it's just a line and bike lane and cars are going right there personally. I'm curious as to whether this project or any of them in the planning, will, will more, will they look more like that, the, the bike lanes around, around the airport where there's some sort of lane barrier, even if it's something with the amount of distracted driving and things like that. It just looks, it looks better to me, looks cleaner. It's, you know, and I, I think it's just safer and that sort of thing. So when you look at that, what's the, the future design of, of those?
The, the grant application actually calls for a separated multi-use trails from the streets. It will be a separate trail. But we are currently just starting to design on that. So we are going to look at also the cycle track, which we would when you're referring to on Airport Way, we're, we're going to see if that's more appropriate for there. Because that would tie into the cycle track that we just installed on Shattuck and the kind of continuing up to Grady Way tie into the transit center there. So it will be separated. So it will be the type of facility that you like, which is separated more from the street. At least from from Talbot over to Shattuck where it ties into the transit center, going to the east those more challenging. So we haven't identified yet because of right away constraints and what that will look like, but we'll, we can keep you up to date on as we get into the design of what that facility will look like. But we don't have as much funding for those improvements. So it may end up looking more like the bike boxes of intersections. But we're also working with King County because that seventh corridor is also identified as connection to the light sound trail. So if they can bring funding to the table, maybe at least long-term, we can look at having a more of a multi use trail type of facility on one side of the road or the other. But there are constraints on that quarter that I've been, ever since I've got to the city, that's been a corridor that bicycles want to use the seventh. There's not a whole lot of choices for them to make these specific connections, but it's a very challenging corridor without, you know, taking a lot of trees, a lot of parking, other things that are very controversial. You should bring up a good point. Some people you know, like the trade, don't like the trade-offs that bike lanes have. One of the examples I'll give you is we have funding for 168th Street and Vincent Hillary for a set cycle track. Fortunately, we need to do a lot of public outreach before we move forward with that project because it would eliminate parking on one side of the street. There's also garbage pickup for people. So those, those things are things that really get people wondering what the trade-offs are going to be and we need to be careful and we put in these facilities to make sure that people are accepting of the trade-offs come with those type of projects.
I'd rather it be done right than just.
Yeah. Over the 12th, we're directing over to 12th Street.
May I will admit fully that this is probably more of a PD question than I thought I was going to ask these things. But I'm out walking around, I notice I cars blocking the bike. Is there any violations for that or is that just?
It's illegal to operate a motor vehicle on bike lanes.
Well, I mean, just like parked, parked and blocking bike lanes.
Yeah, that would be illegal.
Well, like on 116th, you see people blocking the bike lane if their cars parked along the way.
Can't remember if we have a sign. Oh yeah, we do have one section on the side. Yeah. If it's not signed, then it's a more difficult thing to.
Yeah, I don't know, but I know, I know. See a car coming and you're leaving out. Yeah, yeah. Who's up next?
So, okay, so I'm going to talk about tip 2215, which is the safer access to neighborhood. This that we will really talk about here, you know, about that grant. My question is, I know that we, they, when we talk about the survey that we are you know, you know what I'm talking about, right? Is it the, the allocation of the, of the project or the money that we, that, that the grant is 249,000, right? Um, is the survey, how much the survey is costing? How much is it?
Well, I don't know, stop ahead, but I think it's under 10,000 or something like that.
Okay. Yeah, we have. So, so they, they, my question is the amount of money that we have is basically to, to, to recognize what are the needs, but we will not be able to use.
It's, it's an education program is what it is, but we're gathering a lot of really critical information that will help us with prioritizing sidewalks. So it's definitely going to help us from a data standpoint and hearing from the public on what their destinations they want to get to.
Thank you.
I have, please, I have that right now.
So they, my, it has to do with a question that Mr. President already asked, the 2210 which is the sidewalk representation and prepotsy program. That is just for the rehabilitation. They $100,000 that were allocated. But so the new, the new sidewalks will be covered by the walkway program 22.
Yeah, it's, it's currently unfunded at this time. That we.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Please. Uh, thank you, thank you, Mark. This is very important because, as you say, it's not going to be enough money. But because we have not put enough money here, so we have to start doing it. Because even though this is of the next ten years, it will bring a change. Now, we're not bringing any change because we don't have the resources. So uh, thank you for 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 bringing that information to us to to move forward with this idea. Because we need to find funding. This is the the city in that area, we're very in need. And we have said it over and over and over. Funding, enough funding, it has it has need something that that touch the city over the last, I would say. So.
And if I can jump in on that real quick, yeah, I just uh, just heard that the stated city of Kenmore, they just recently completed, I want to say seven miles of sidewalk. Now, they have a transportation benefit district, but I'm just to say, I feel like Kenmore can do it, Brenton can do it. It certainly would stand behind that getting those better funding mechanisms in place. Because, yeah, we need to have local dollars to get some of that stuff done.
To go to the public.
Do you find any questions? All right.
So I I want to read this. This is um, tip twenty-two twenty northeast Sunset Boulevard SR nine hundred quarter improvement. Priority rank eighteen. And and this may just be just as much for an educational kind of purpose than than anything for. But says the northeast Sunset Boulevard Quarter Improvement Project received a service transportation program grant in the dollar one point three billion for design in two thousand thirteen, two thousand twenty. The project received three point one five million in SDP funding for the ROW phase for the two thousand eighteen contingency list. Due to project cost escalation, the city is returning the design in ROW federal grant funding. So the project can be implemented in phase, and someone read the rest of it. But is that to say, help me understand, returning it, is that because those funds had to do with a certain, look, all or nothing? You finish this by this time or else?
Yeah. Yeah, we originally just asked for a scope change. Reduce the project size and just keep the grant we have, but they made us recompete is what they made us do, basically. In order to be fair for the original grant, we competed for the grant, we competed for against other projects. So in order to be fair to everybody, we for, we changed the scope. They wanted us to recompete, so that's basically what we had to do is return the funds, but then repeat and get a smaller project funded. Thirty million dollars or more. And we just knew that financially, we could not come up with a financial plan to fund that all at once. So we are now start taking smaller pieces of it.
So, um, they, thank you, I really agree. This is the T twenty-two twenty-nine, uh, which is now branching priority number thirty-nine. And I want to thank you for adding this project. But something that I, is under my concern, is a negative under directives, which I love that category that that you put on place. Because because now understand better. And the negative only directly say that easy electric officials have not, among other things, have not, is to the priority of that area. Is we're talking about car with car road traffic, which is, you know, I have bring it over and over and over that it's a nightmare there. So I will not put the negative priorities for like that. Because I think every single year I have expressed the need in that area. First of all, I want to thank you for adding it because it's candidate here. Even though we did four years ago, to correct me, Jim, if I'm wrong, the whole thing about the lights. The new study, you know, to 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 change the lights to mitigate the traffic in that area.
Yeah, yeah, that was a bad signal.
Right, but still, it doesn't really is a pretty nightmare, you know? So so I just want to thank for adding it, but I was questioning why is a negative.
Yeah, we will look at that. I I made a note to check that. And there is a, actually, that's our one sixty-seven master plan going on right now. That's one of the areas we've emphasized is the new interchange at one sixty-seven. Car road, because what will happen is, even if we do end up doing some widening on car road. When you get down to the interchange, it's still going to be a bottleneck down there, so we really need to have those improvements done. So as part of the master plan, I think Washita will be coming to you October this year to talk about the master plan and some other projects. So you may want to also emphasize that, give some talking points as well. House member Will Howren is on the advisory committee for that. But we've emphasized two areas, one sixty-seven, one is their car road, the new interchange around the hospital. It's a regional facility, everybody in the valley uses it, we really need to have better access to it. Then, of course, we emphasize that at the very end of the limited access right of one sixty-seven. We have a brand-new regional transiting center being built to, we need to have better access to those two areas of the master plan.
My follow-up comment is that, when you, again, we were ranking number thirty-nine, I remember for years, we were talking about leg washing to be a priority. Because it was always a tactic there. And I would say, we need again to take as priority the whole regional geographic area of of Brenton. And in the south end, I would say this is the main criteria street that is a big problem.
I was just going to say, uh, to secondly, before I said, there's no rhyme or reason as to when or why car road gets backed up. Like you would think, you would think on a random Saturday afternoon, the tunneling on, that it would be smooth sailing. But that's not the case. It just doesn't matter when, it just seems to get congested and backed up. I used to joke, oh, my people must be going to Ikea. There's no rhyme or reason. And then again, it's also one of those areas that if you're in a hurry, you try to avoid it, even if it's going to cause to a few other minutes, a few extra minutes on the other side.
That's what I knew so much about gate.
There's no predictability on if it's going to be smooth sailing or if it's going to be solid back up.
Yeah, a lot of it's just a lack of these west connections across one sixty-seven too. And I, I know there there has been controversial projects like the one ninety-second as well, to move that over. But that's really, it's probably what is needed, just more east-west connections along there. Hidden strand or punch through as well would be very.
All right, my last one. Uh, this, this one, it just, it caught my attention even though, and it was probably ranked twenty-five, which I thought was high enough. Um, it was South Second Street Conversion Project twenty-two twenty-five.
Right.
That, that's, of course, I I'm imagining to give one more street other than Third Street to get downtown Renton. I mean, to really, I I don't imagine, there's probably none of the traffic where you're concerned about the congestion of east-to-westbound traffic going to Rainier. But I know it's it's a little bit down the way, but I mean, obviously it's on here. I just want you to kind of speak to that as far as the overall goal and and kind of maybe what was the, maybe just to 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 put that where it is and.
Well, it actually is funded partially for design at South Second, so it gives a little bit of financial lift on that one. But it is part of a lot of our plans to make the conversions, both second and third. As far as the converting back to two-way traffic. Yeah, and that, what we're going to be doing is, we're going to be doing some additional traffic modeling. Because we have a lot of things going on right now in the downtown area with the transit center. CD is looking at upselling a lot of the properties around the transit center. So there's going to be a lot of development in that area. And we want to make sure that the conversion isn't going to cause additional traffic jams downtown as well. So I want to make sure it's going to be working well. Uh, so we're going to be doing some additional modeling, planning of both second and third, and putting together an implementation plan. When do we think that those projects could be completed and what the cost of those projects would be? So we definitely need to do a little bit more planning in the downtown area to make sure all this is going to work well. Because it's, what's going to happen is most likely is Rainier, Brady Way, or Airport Way. And Logan are really have to take the brunt of the traffic moving through that particular area as we convert those streets back to two-way traffic. But we also need to serve transit in the downtown area. So second is most likely going to be the transit corridor going to have the future. There's a lot of discussions that need to happen because people have a lot of ideas of what they want the downtown area to look like. And so we get a lot of, a lot of feedback on that. From a traffic standpoint, we want to make sure it's all well together.
Yes, please.
Logan, I don't know if I recall seeing that, it would be something on Logan, but it strikes me, I mean, with with the future development that likely is going to be there. Probably even with the Topgolf when that thing gets going and then you have people looking at other stuff. That, that it seems is, are there any plans for, can anything be done there? Because I could see that just being.
Yeah, we actually, we do have preliminary plans that we haven't been able to move forward with because of the constraints of property. We really need to have another northbound lane there, but we need to have properties going to make that work. And they already have that spur going into the plant that kind of strains everything in there. But we do have preliminary plans to widen that road, but it's going to be, probably have to wait till, you know, whether Boeing does need the property or it's redeveloped. Or we'll just wait and see when that happens. But it's definitely needed. We need to have a second northbound lane.
Mine's actually about part of twenty-two twenty-eight on the one sixteen improvement. And when we look at priority list, it's listed at priority level forty-five. And what concerns me about that ranking, I'm going back and forth, is it's prioritized low for life safety. And I I I'm not proficient enough to talk about financial or directive, but I don't think the low life safety evaluation is a hundred percent accurate. When you're walking down one sixteen, especially with the number of children, the schools. I was wondering if there's any pushback on that, if there's any room for pushback on that. But also, is in that improved project, is there any conversation around stoplights around that area? Because now this is where I need a couple of my consultants to help me. There is one concern that I think we both spoke to at one point that I brought up a couple of times. I brought them up at the, at the retreat about a person who brought up the danger for children who are crossing Nelson Middle School. And I said that one sixteen, correct?
Yeah.
And then, um, and so does that include, I guess, first question, can we push back on the low priority life safety at two? Is there any inclusion of traffic lights in that project for twenty, can I get a read back?
I think to upgrade some of the signals and widening, I believe. One intersection one is recommended, but mainly it's non-motorized improvement is what I recall.
And so you update the signal, I don't think there are any on that street.
Yeah, I was just trying to think about, there's two, there's one at the seven eleven.
Right, that, that.
And then there's one at the, when you're getting ready.
Yeah.
Are you trying to further north closer to Cascade Elementary?
Where, because there's not one from Puget till you get to the seven eleven.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
And we have a roundabout.
From the roundabout, the roundabout to the intersection, that whole road. I have a threat of the air a child gate hit.
So there's a pedestrian crossing at a hundred and sixty-four, like a flasher.
Yeah, that's the one that I think I mentioned, we talked about this last time.
I mean, it does say new street lights, traffic signals.
So then, I guess, so thank you for clarifying, I appreciate that, because I would want to push back on that low priority for safety. Because the number of children that are there and those that are walking, and I've seen council member Prince walking along, I'm like, God, if I were on my phone, I'd probably hit him. But I don't drive a bike on my phone.
I don't, I never.
You should not.
I don't have, when I.
So there are those two projects that will reevaluate the priorities, and that'll be the car road and one sixteen. So why the public period will reassess that.
And thank you for the clarification of the street lights.
You already made your T twenty-two zero-two. Uh, that has to do with the, for the southwest, for their street resurfacing during this presentation. But could you please remind me why we swap the federal funds to local funds in that?
That actually helped the region, and it gets one of our projects out of the federal funding requirements is the main reason. But the region has obligation, federal funding obligation every year. So they look for projects that can take on additional federal funding. At the time, we had Wells and Williams, which would take on more federal funding. And we had city money in it, so we could transfer over to the other projects. So it benefited us by taking one of our projects out of the federal funding requirements, but also benefited the region by having more federal funding obligated. So they meet their targets, so the region doesn't.
Right before we end up, I'm going to end up with a high note, two, two ones. One is the walkaway master plan date for two thousand eighteen, two thousand eight, thank you. I see it is here, thank you very much. It's time to do that, and I know that that needed funds for that, so I see it as a candidate. But I let, I let a day in, obviously, because it gets me a hard one sometimes. And um, T twenty-two forty-five, which you already mentioned. I'm very tired of their empty promises of some transit. So every single time that I see that probably the project is going to be founded in two twenty-six, two twenty-seven, and then two twenty-eight. I have to go back to all my maps that show that by now we should be cutting the ribbon of the BRT. Because it was going to be delivered before the line rail, and it gets me. But I'm hoping that this year we will cut back the sound transit, give us an update, and I can address all these questions. But any updates that you can give us besides the fact that, okay, we are now helping to, you know, to build the stops and and all of this? Any other updates that we have on the BRT or the transit station?
So I, so just two weeks ago, I think now, in our east subarea leading, we had a whole briefing on BRT. And with a significant impact on transit. And board member Baker and I really pushed, A, to make sure that the parking garage downtown is built. And B, to the chagrin of DOT secretary Lahr, that we made sure that we did something in the short term at northeast forty-four. Since we agreed to that, they were looking to get buy-off from the board members in the subarea before they went to the full board. They got the buy-off from us, they're going to bring it to the full board, I think, for the next couple of months. Because Renton has been such a good partner with them on this, I don't foresee there being any issues. And because I'm always reminding my colleagues, you've not really given much in sound transit. Except when people say, people say busters, but I mean, so I, so I changed it from nothing to much. To Renton when it comes to sound transit, you know, you need to really invest. I said, I know, every time before we do the part attach in Renton, they're like, well, we're paying for something that we're not giving the service. My colleagues on the board understand that. I don't think, I don't foresee us having any issue with them wanting with us. As far as it being pushed back. As far as it being pushed back, uh, BRT, honestly, all of that was because COVID. And the Fairbox revenues plummeted because of COVID. No one was writing transit really when we did our big shutdown. And so there wasn't the Fairbox revenue to be able to do that, which is why we ended up doing a good recovery, doing the alignment. I think we're gonna start seeing more Fairbox revenues come in. I think when our new CEO starts next month, uh, she is more community oriented than our previous CEO. Be more amiable to what members of the community and cities that are being served, uh, some change to say about stuff. And so I think we'll have a a new local partnership.
Thank you, House Member Prince. One of my, you know, over the years, one of my biggest concerns has been that, what you just mentioned. The money that our taxpayers are putting in, uh, it goes to the ISA, meaning all the cities from Renton to both, right? So every single time that I see all the light rail improvements in Kirkland, Bellevue, or whatever that area that is where it's happening, I know that it should be a place that say thank you to the residents of Renton for their 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 contribution.
Yes.
They two cities out of this pack of money that we're receiving the minimum, what we both are right, right? The right minute. And that's when I, I don't think that in the past that board has seen that way.
No.
Have seen it that way, that where the money goes, and it goes to the communities that are in most need from the wealth communities that represent the Redmond, Kirkland, and Bellevue.
Isabel.
You need to.
Well, and so just being honest, part of that is because Renton had a board member, Isabel had a board member. And it took care of what they want when they were crafting the SC three package. They made sure that their communities were taken care of. We've not started crafting the SC four package yet. When we do, I will make sure that Renton's taken care of. Because the one thing that I do know about sound transit and staff is that they really do try to make sure that when there's someone at the table, a board member at the table, that they listen to them as far as what their communities need. I just happened to come on the board right as COVID hit and the Fairbox revenue is paying. Even then, I pushed really hard. I, before we knew what it was gonna look like, uh, at COVID, and they were, they, so our BRT is delayed less than the other line of the BRT, the North Line, mainly because I said we can't do that for them. We can't delay it. We, Renton needs their BRT contract. And so I know we understand, we'll make sure that it happens. But no, I understand. It's been an adversarial partnership, if you wanna call it a partnership, uh, for decades.
Thank you.
Sure.
Question, because you.
I got one question.
Do you ask?
Mine doesn't.
Okay. I, yes, because I know that they're, I get very heated about this. Former Councilmember Franty Foreman, uh, when he was chair of his position, he started a project that was that we kept every three months, conversation about the future of light rail with them, and what we're gonna do there, where we're gonna go. Because even if it was not in the table of sound transit, at least the city of Renton, we should have a ready a plan when it's ready for funding to say, this is what what it is, and this is what it should look like. Are we moving forward there or?
Yeah, it's part of the subarea plan around the new transit center, there was some light rail planning done as part of that. So we've identified potential locations for stations. For routing is along the BNSF right away. That seemed the least impactful on the communities using that right away in the future. And then stations were just a little bit north of the of the new transit center, the light rail, then another station up in the land. And there certainly was discussion as well, it's continuing all the way up to Bellevue in the future as well.
Thank you. And I know you know, Councilmember Franty, that there's money in SC three for light rail physical study.
Yeah.
Uh, it doesn't make sense to view that until we're closer to having light rail, because prices and everything will change, the study ops, but there's money in there, and it's for your studying.
Sorry, I had one one question. I wanted to take a back to bikes real quick before we adjourn. And so, and and Councilmember Alr, I think you get it perfectly as far as the the need for separation, because we're seeing with the emergence of e-bikes, more people willing to hop on a bicycle instead of in a car. So I do think it's right to prioritize a lot of the trails that we're doing. I would love to see more of that. The one trail, I'm curious, and maybe I'm just asking this a year early, um, the East Rail Terminus. I see we have Lake to Sound Trail in here as far as, I guess, something we need to identify, work around, or right way too early to that, since we just have the six million approved for the design.
It probably does make sense to look at the East Trail in here. It's the Parks Department's been working on that with King County. It's certainly part of their plans, but we certainly could add it to the six.
Because I know, yeah, it would probably be our portion of the right way, but I don't know what that mixture looks like yet, and it certainly, to me, is important enough. Um, if it makes sense to put it in here, I would, because it will be a free vital connection, I would say, so certainly the risk is. But Glendale Parks is working on it too. I saw C E D had a little known here, so let's get Park something too. All right, on that, it looks like we are at the the conclusion of this meeting. Thank you. Very good questions, everyone, and thank you for the presentation.